We'll bring the meeting to order of the Wilmington City Council. So I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here this evening and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Ron Evans of the Wilmington Police Department. If you'll please come forward to give our invocation. I will ask that everyone stand and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your continued grace and your continued mercy that you bestow upon us day in and day out. Father, we ask for special protection for our first responders, our teachers, those that work in the medical field. God, we thank you for them. Lord, I ask that you continue to give wisdom to this council, to the city manager's office, to the city clerk's office, as they make their decision that will be beneficial to the citizens of Wilmington. We pray this prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone, to this historic first meeting of this new council chambers here in Wilmington City Hall. We hope it's a good one, and thank you for being here this evening. We have several presentations this evening. Our first presentation, I'd like to recognize Pam Proctor, who is an officer with the Stamp Defiance Chapter proclaiming or naming September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. If she'll meet me up front here. the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to efficiently recognize this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Bill Saffo, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. And the three greatest words in the Constitution is "we, the people." So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm a member of the Stamp Defiance Chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. We are a non-political women's service organization, serving the community through education, patriotism, and historic preservation. Thank you, Mayor Saffo, for this important document as we celebrate the Constitution, which is the most important document in our history. We will be celebrating the Constitution Day on September 17th at the Bergman Wright House at 3:00 PM. Please join us.
I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to recognize John Hacker of the North Carolina Committee Chairman to be the One Campaign, the Proclamation Enigma, September 2025, as National Suicide Awareness Month. Okay, Penny. She's the producer and director, so let's see how this goes. City Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas September is National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, and suicide respects no boundaries, not age, sex, skin, color, marital status, educational profession, and is one of the leading causes of death, with one death by suicide every 11 minutes. And whereas 18 to 25 veterans die by suicide every day, and whereas the American Legion Post exists to serve veterans, their families, and local communities, and whereas to address the issue of veteran suicides, the Legion created the Be The One Initiative with the goal to destigmatize mental health issues, raise awareness of suicide in our communities, and provide practical tools to aid in suicide prevention. And whereas the Legion is here to help through awareness programs and work within their communities, focusing first on raising awareness among service providers, law enforcement, EMS, and fire personnel, and then providing them with the necessary tools to better assist the public. And whereas the Cape Fear Region Be The One Program does that through a wallet card application-driven link called Be The One. Now therefore, on behalf of the Wilmington City Council, I, Mayor Bill Saffo, do hereby designate September 2025 as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Wilmington, North Carolina. I just want to thank the Legion for everything you folks do about John with all of the veterans in our community and this region. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Well, the Cape Fear Region is very veteran-friendly, and we fought very hard, worked very hard to get this far, and we're so proud and pleased that Wilmington has done this, done an honor to us. We're going to take this and really let people know that Wilmington has stepped up to the plate to serve our veterans and our people who are suffering. Again, 22 to 25 veterans die a day through suicide. That's one in 11 civilians. So it's critical, and we're here to help. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Thank you. God bless you. This time, I'd like to recognize Wendy Gianni, Gianni King, the Community Risk Reduction Coordinator of the Wilmington Fire Department, proclaiming or naming September 22nd through the 26th as Fall Prevention Awareness Week. Oh, there she is. I saw her earlier.
Twice today, so.
City Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas the Wilmington Fire Department is observing a trending increase in frequent system utilizers, lift assists, and emergency calls related to falls, and whereas each year, millions of older Americans experience falls, with one in four adults aged 65 and older falling annually, often resulting in reduced mobility, loss of independence, and increased medical costs. And whereas falls are the leading cause of fatal and non-fatal injuries among older adults, presenting a significant public health challenge that negatively affects individual well-being and community resources. And whereas falls are preventable through a combination of evidence-based strategies including home safety assessments, exercise programs that enhance balance and strength, regular vision, and medication checks, and community education. And whereas the City of Wilmington is dedicated to supporting the health, safety, and dignity of all residents, particularly our older adults, through coordinated efforts involving public health, emergency services, housing, and community organizations. Now therefore, I, Mayor Saffo, Mayor of the City of Wilmington, do hereby proclaim this week of September 22nd through the 26th, 2025, as Fall Prevention Awareness Week in Wilmington. And Fall Prevention Awareness Week is an opportunity to raise awareness, promote collaborative solutions, and empower residents, caregivers, and professionals to take proactive steps to reduce fall risk among our aging population. And this is a very personal thing to me because I lost my uncle two months ago to a fall. And I just, I thank you for everything you folks do and make people aware of this because this is a very serious issue throughout our country, our communities. Thank you very much. God bless you. Thank you. I'd like to ask if any councilmember would like to hear any of the items separately. If not, what are the wishes of this council? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment. We have 10 speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. There is a counter which keeps the time there. If you'll please come forward as I call your name, and please state your address and where you live. And if you're first, the first speaker this evening is Ms. Shelby Cola Coella, who will be speaking to us about the ordinance adding section dash 10 certain actions prohibited on city property to Chapter 6, Article 1 of the Wilmington City Code. Shelby here? Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Tom Harris, who will be speaking to us about camping ban and responding to council's comments from previous council meetings. Mr. Harris here. It's Mr. Harris.
Dylan, were you able to do the video?
I don't have it at the moment, Tom. I'm looking.
Okay. All right. Clifford and I had a wonderful time over at the healing place this afternoon, and I'm the kind of guy where when somebody tells me it's not a great idea to do something, of course, it makes me want to do it. I shot some video where we were talking to the homeless individuals, people experiencing homelessness, who gather every day there at 2:30 to wait until the 3 o'clock lottery there for seven shelter beds for males and seven for females. And they had some great comments, you know, when I asked them, you know, who they were, where they were from, what they would like to tell y'all tonight. And, you know, most of them were people who worked, who, like, there's one young man in his twenties who works at the Waffle House as a waiter, and he doesn't make enough money to be able to rent anything that he can, he can find. There's another older guy, I don't know, probably sixties, who used to farm and lost his farm. But he, he works too, but they just can't afford a place to, to live. And I see it from both sides because I bought a historic building on downtown Wilmington on Front Street, kind of an epicenter of things back in '06. And, you know, our business has, has suffered, and it's suffering, you know, right now. And you'll hear some of that from now business partner in the business. You know, I've retained ownership of the, of the building, but I've, I've shared the ownership of the, the business with two key people who've worked for me for years. So we, we need to do something. I wish, I wish we were voting on a different ordinance that was more of a 100-foot buffer from the property lines of businesses and residences because I've talked to homeowners here in, in town who, for example, of first-time homeowners, a young couple, and, and somebody was, you know, group was camping right at their property line at their backyard. But we've got to do something. I mean, there's no doubt about that, and I think that, that most of y'all agree that we, we need to do something. I guess the, you know, the one silver cloud for me is I, I know a lot of people who wear blue and work for WPD, and, and I know that if y'all were to pass this ordinance, you know, they're not going to go out and, and look for every person who's, who's camping and, and run them off. That's just not how they operate. And I guess that's the one consolation I have, that if this thing does pass tonight, that it's not going to be overly, overly onerous in terms of, of, I mean, and in talking to, different conversation that Clifford didn't hear, Councilman Barnett didn't hear when I had it with the same group, I guess about a month ago, you know, to ask them, you know, what they would do if there were a camping ban, and they were pretty creative in terms of where they would go and be out of sight and, and not get, you know, not get hassled and stuff. So I wish I, you know, I wish I had a silver bullet, and I know y'all wish y'all had a silver bullet, but there is no easy answer on this stuff, but we've got to do something. And it's probably too late to change it to a 100-foot buffer because I know y'all have, you know, kind of made your decisions and stuff, but we'll just see what happens and live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next speaker is Mr. Josh Cranford. Is Josh here? Josh, would you please also, where you really at?
Yep. I'm Josh. I work and live downtown, and I've been here about 20 years, and I've seen the rise and fall downtown, and it's, I, I had this in my mind two weeks ago of exactly what I would say, and it's changed. I've seen a marked difference the past 10 to 12 days of presence of police downtown, and it's made me feel good. But now the challenge is to keep it up, is to make sure we are not just putting a Band-Aid on this so the downtown owners are not causing a ruckus and bringing things up and emailing the city council. We have to figure out a long-term solution. We have to put our heads together. That's why you guys are here. And at the end of the day, we need to make sure we have a safe place for all of Wilmington, not just downtown. So if this ordinance passes, again, it's not a central business district ordinance. It's for all of downtown, which covers everybody. So the people in South Front, the people in North Front, or North Fourth. So just be mindful of that. And again, this is a stepping stone to something better. We need to figure out how to help these people, and we've got to keep, keep trucking with it and making sure that we are being present with it, and we need to put our heads together. And this is out of responsibility. This is not out of privilege. I'm not standing, standing in front of you for that. It's because I live and work downtown. I raised my daughter. I have a vested interest in here. I want to make sure it's here for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Chap Wallace. Is Mr. Wallace here? And please make sure you tell us where you live, sir. Please tell us where you live, too.
Chap Wallace, I live on Front Street. Also own two businesses on Front Street. Which again, I'll say is a privilege to be downtown, be working downtown. I came up through it, working jobs in places downtown, and now I've had the good fortune to own some things. I think since the last meeting, and some of you were at some of the other meetings we had amongst the business owners and some of the members of downtown community, to reiterate some of what's been already said, I think we all come to the conclusion to, you know, the narrative of the ordinance is trying to round up homeless people and throw them in jail was kind of misrepresented. One thing I tried to reiterate some of the meetings, I know I talked to some of you individually about it, and that within any community, whether it be homeless, whether it be any community, there's going to be some bad actors, some that are worse than others, some that should not be among, you know, the element in which they're in. I think this is a, personally, a good tool to, if you talk to other people who are in a fortunate situation, which I have too, you know, you start talking to them and like, they get it. They're like, we're, you know, they understand what's going on. There's like, we don't want to be associated with some of these, I mean, other, lack of better words, degenerates that are out here doing crazy stuff and which all, everybody's made a bunch of examples for. We don't want to have to go back over it again, but it's pretty known from like the open-air drug use to et cetera. And being a deterrent for people to want to come downtown. And, I mean, if you see it in, you know, every newspaper article, it seems like recently is in negative light, and trust me, that's not good for business. Everybody's, if you've talked to enough business owners, everyone's down this summer. But I think, you know, one, one of the things that this would be, in my opinion, positive for is giving a tool to be able to separate that and what people are a definite issue. Giving the, another tool, the tool back to the officers who are, over the past weeks, I'll reiterate too, they've done a wonderful job of starting it, but there's, anybody that's down here every day will tell you it's not over with. But, you know, I do think that we're, we've, it's definitely gotten to be a little bit more positive than what it has been, but this is a good, like I said, once again, another tool that could be used, you know, to, you know, so you can avoid situations. I mean, everybody saw what just happened in Charlotte. I mean, that's the kind of, I mean, I've physically had altercations of people. I've shared that before, to get them away from, get them out of people's shops, you know, where there's like young girls at and stuff, which I'm happy to do. It's no big deal. But, you know, I would like to, you know, in order to prevent situations, I do like think that, you know, you should really consider giving everything available at your disposal to help with situations. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is that a gong? Next speaker is Ms. Anna Lee, be talking to us about downtown residents opposed to criminalizing neighbors who are homeless. Ms. Lee, is Ms. Lee here?
Well, that's my daughter. She's not here. Can I take a place?
Nope. Next speaker is Mr. Donald Skinner, who will also be talking to us about downtown homelessness. Welcome, Ms. Skinner.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, thank you very much.
Could you also tell us where you live, sir?
I will.
Yes, sir.
I hadn't forgotten.
I know.
My name is Don Skinner, and I live at 2027 Harrison Street up in Sunset Park, not very far away. I worked with the homeless population for 23 years. I began in 1992 with Good Shepherd Center when I was hired to direct their Day Labor Program. It was my very first experience having anything to do with homeless people. And it was a very interesting experience. It didn't take me too long to figure out that these folks were not going to transition from homelessness to full-time work without a place to stay. It's not going to happen. Nothing sticks without a home to stay in, not sobriety, not continuing education, not better mental health. It all depends on a house. And these folks are, I only got three minutes, guys. These folks are, are not responsible for that problem. We are. I determined that the best thing that I could do while I was at Good Shepherd would be to treat the folks with respect, to accept them as they were, and to enjoy them, to be fair with them. And so I did. And I was there for 10 years. It took me five years to earn their trust before they believed that I would do what I told them I would do. When I left Good Shepherd, I joined some folks, and together we created Phoenix Employment Ministry, which now operates as stepping, Step Up Wilmington. Much easier for me to remember Phoenix Employment Ministry. And one of the requirements for people that participated in our program is they had to have a place to stay. And if we could help them with that, we would. They could stay in a shelter, they could stay with a neighbor, they could stay with a family member. It didn't make any difference, but they had to have a place to stay, period. Because we aren't going to waste our time trying to help somebody do something they couldn't do without a place to stay. When they walked into our facility, they were treated with respect, kindness, and care. We would do everything we could in our power to help them out. We taught them the eight great words, and they are, "I am a valuable person of great worth." It's like everybody in this room. It meant so much to one person. He had it tattooed on his arm. "I am a valuable person of great worth." And we worked with that every day. I can remember one person, her name was Hope, and she felt so worthless. I mean, some of these folks are told that they are worthless and never amount to anything. They've been treated that way their whole lives. She couldn't say it. And I said, "You don't have to believe it, just say the words." So we worked with her for a good while, and finally she was able to. But that's what they are up against, is they feel worthless because they're treated that way. They're not human garbage. They're human beings, just like you and I. They have all the sensitivities that we have, and the fact that they're downtown, they're going down there the same reason that we do. It's a nice place to go. And where else are they going to be? You know? I hang out in my backyard all day long, and I've got a place to be. They don't. My suggestion, and I'm very naive, I don't know what's going on in town right now.
Can you wrap it up in about 30 seconds?
I can. I think that we need to put together a large group of people, taken from the whole community, maybe as many as 60 people or 100, if it takes that, to begin thinking outside the box and creating ways that we can establish homes for these people to stay. It's not their problem, it's our problem. It's not the problem of the people downtown, it's not your problem. It belongs to the whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Virginia May Goldrick, who will be saying that will also talk to us about don't criminalize homelessness.
Hi, I'm Virginia Goldrick. I'm, I live at 17th and Greenfield, at 17 Social, 1625, South 17th. And I'm a board member of NAMIWilmington.org, which stands for National Alliance on Mental Illness. And I facilitate three peer support groups in Wilmington. And I know firsthand how much people in recovery need support and how they can contribute if they are given a chance. So I, I am object to the ordinance, and I would like to see us be constructive. NAMI Wilmington should be part of any consortium of problem-solving that convenes around this issue. I would like to see more peer living rooms. RHA had a peer living room that will terminate at the end of September, and we need more of those. We also need peer-run crisis respite. And we need to support community organizations that are in the business of helping these people because they know them and understand them. And I'm always hearing about able-bodied people who could work. A lot of people with mental illness could work, but the system is so baffling that they are afraid to jeopardize their benefits. I would like to see an innovative workforce development group, perhaps through Step Up, that would empower people on benefits to understand what work incentives exist because they're very complicated. And I'd like to see us create a job seeker support group and other helps. Here's to social services.
Kristen Stitt, who will be speaking to us about care for kids. Miss Stitt, is Karen here? Kristen, I'm sorry. Is Kristen here? Is Kristen here? Kristen once, Kristen twice. Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Susan Sabatini, who will be talking to us about the criminalization of homelessness.
My name is Susan Sabatini. I live around Carolina Beach and Independence Road, around that area. I'm a psychotherapist. I'm in private practice. I have a small business here in Wilmington. And I wanted to share my thoughts as a mental health professional. We know homeless is prevalent all around the country. That's a problem for everybody. Nobody's born saying, "My goal is to be homeless." Okay? Okay? Life happens, trauma happens, job loss, loss of their home as a result of unemployment, the inability to cope, cycle of substance abuse may begin, the list is very long, we all know that. As a mental health professional, I see the lack of accessibility to mental health every day, and it is astonishing. Even if individuals can buy healthcare, the co-payments for sessions are not affordable. Without, what about those people who don't have healthcare? What are they supposed to do? And then based on the reimbursement to mental health providers, I had to throw this in, it's obvious mental health is not a priority. You know, when you hear about shootings, assaults, you hear about substance abuse, more times than not, the, it's an undiagnosed mental health issue is the root cause, all over the country, every time you hear one of those things. The idea of criminalizing individuals for their homelessness will cycle them in and out of jails, how does that provide them the tools that they need to fight, to help fix their situation? I understand there's not a simple solution, it takes more than criminalizing individuals without resources, for whatever the reason, and find themselves on the streets. I don't have the answer, yet I know homelessness certainly is not. We cannot remove a group of people from our society. It's our job, thank you, isn't it our job, both yours and mine, to help people find a way out of poverty instead of punishing them for it? I have spent 30 years working for large corporations. My training tells me to recognize the problem, identify the root cause, consider options for resolution. In this case, just to be clear, for my clarity, we're going to recognize the problem, we're going to propose criminalizing homelessness to solve the problem, yet we haven't identified the root cause. So how successful will we really be? Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Linda Barnett, who will be speaking to us about downtown at night.
Hello, I'm Linda Barnett, and my address is 6919 Lipscomb Drive. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County in general, I raised my children here. I have seen a progressive, you know, general, like, just increase in everything, more traffic, more houses, more people, so naturally, we're going to have more poverty, more homelessness, especially because of the income inequality that we now have. We see, you know, there's a lot of people moving into the community who have lots of money, they come from other places, they bring, you know, large amounts of money with them. In the meantime, people that have lived here for years are pushed out of their housing, they can't afford to fix it up, you know, maybe they wouldn't, I mean, that would be one, a practical thing, that we could help people to stay in their houses. The other thing I wanted to say is a lot, I really do sympathize with the business owners downtown, and they're kind of taking the brunt of this in their businesses, which it should not be that way. I was kind of appalled to hear at the last meeting I attended, some of the problems they were having with people defecating on their, you know, door stoops, and, you know, in other places, there's like people who are down there, like the police, who are kind of patrolling and watching out that these things don't happen. This proposal is really just reiterating what's already illegal. It's not legal to eliminate on private property, or public property for that matter, it's just, you know, it's a health hazard. Aggressive panhandling, sleeping outdoors, and, you know, these are all things that are already illegal, okay? We're not doing anything here with this. This is just like window dressing. What you really need to do is listen to the people who actually work with this population, come up with some creative solutions, like a lot of the people mentioned, they, they know more about it than, than we do, you know, the people who stood up and, and mentioned some of these things. You have to be creative, it's a complex situation, it's not like a easy fix, there's no easy fix. And so I just, I would like to see this not pass, so that you would all go back to the table and come up with some decent proposals. And that's all I got to say about it, so, and I love your new digs here.
It's your digs, please, thank you. Madam clerk, I know that we have three speakers that did not show up, so do we have any backup speakers, I think they could sign up? If you do, I know, excuse me, the clerk, madam clerk, could you give me the list, please?
There may be somebody who, who is.
Anna Lee's back there.
Is Anna, is Anna here? Come on, Ann.
You only have room for one more speaker, and that would be number one. Will you be? Yeah. Hi, my name's Anna Lee, I'm a resident of downtown, I live on 7th Street, near Queen, apologies for being late, I was trying to get kids to all their activities. But it was important to me to be here today because this proposed ordinance that will criminalize our neighbors who are homeless is not going to do anything to solve the problem, I'm repeating what you've heard from so many other speakers. And instead, you all could be using your time and energy, and I really hope that you will, to solve this problem. You could go back, push your, the cohort, the county, use your influence with them to come back to the table and do this work together. There's ideas that have been generated, you guys can put resources and time into solving the problem of homelessness. If you cite people for sleeping in a doorway, they're just going to have something else on their record, they might have a fine that now they have to pay on top of all of the struggles they're already facing. It's, it's, yeah, it's not going to help solve this issue. And so I'm just asking you to use your creativity, use your power, and work with the people, not against them. There's so many people in this room here who do that work every day, many of you do that work every day, and care about the people of this city, and this is, yeah, it's not going to help. And I think, understand that maybe there have been some ideas floating around about some sort of weaker version, or a different version, just about no, we don't need this at all. So, thanks so much.
Madam clerk, time has expired.
Yes, sir, you only can take one more speaker.
Okay, and the speaker would be, you have that name, please?
Tom Pulaski, he's number 11 on the list.
Is Tom here?
If not, the next person would be Laura Bolt.
Laura Bolt here. Okay.
James Fisher. Okay, thank you, and that would be the last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, ma'am, please, thank you, sir, go ahead.
All right, good evening, I'm James Fisher, I live on Element Way. There's been a lot said here this evening, so I won't try to reiterate that, but I personally think that being homeless isn't a crime, it's a human tragedy, right? And my understanding, as, as, as a follow-up to what Ms. Barnett was saying about looking at an alternative, is my understanding is that last year there was developed the strategy to address unsheltered homelessness, like that is a plan, needs to be perhaps dusted off, involves service providers, the community, and of course, different municipal governments, and I think that that's a great alternative, right? So I would hope that the council is looking at reinvigorating that. I think that a community's strength is measured by how compassionately it solves problems, and the choice is whether to punish people for their poverty, or to help build them up. So I'm, I'm really in support of, I know that this had good intentions, but I think this is a flavor of a strategy that hasn't worked anywhere in the nation, that you're just going to find these folks. So I would, I would promote the idea, and offer any help that I could give, that we go back to this plan, build those teams up, work with those service providers, and get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This concludes our public information segment, our next. Yes, sir.
Yeah, could, could, would you inform the public on how it works when they sign in?
Yeah, we have, we have six, 10 speakers that can get to sign up, and first come, first curve, they're usually with the clerk, and then anybody that signs up afterwards, if a speaker doesn't show up, that speaker then, if they are in the audience, is allowed to speak, and that's how it works. So it's 30 minutes, period, and then at the end, if I have five speakers, and I have five that are in the audience that signed up, that didn't show up, they can speak, and that's the rules, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity.
Our next item of business is our public hearings, item PH1 is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the city of Wilmington to rezoned property containing 0.77 acres located at 5320 and 5322 Riceville Avenue from R15, moderate density, single dwelling district, R5 CD, medium density, mixed residential, conditional district for residential development. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Becky Hawk, Ms. Hawk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, both this item and the next item, we are asking for them to be continued due to an advertising error, and we would be able to put them on our next meeting agenda on September 23rd.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the other item, which is item PH2, into the record, and then I'll ask for separate votes on each one of those items. Item PH2 is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the city of Wilmington, rezoned property containing 4.08 acres located at 2929 Market Street, from ONI Office and Institutional to MD17 CD High Density Multi-Dwelling Conditional District for 120-unit workforce housing residential development. So we'll take each one of these separately, so we'll go to the item PH1. And Ms. Hawk, we are going to be hearing these two public hearing items at our next city council meeting?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue, council member Joyner, second by council member Waddell, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously now to item PH2, which I've already read into the record, one of the wishes of council in respect to continuing that item. We have a motion by council member Andrews, second by council member Spears, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on vote to be continued. That brings us to our next item, which is item PH3, which is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair the dwelling at 565 Manly Avenue as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. And I'd like to recognize the city manager, Ms. Hawk, Ms. Hawk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, our chief code enforcement officer, Brian Renner, is here with some slides, but for both this item and the next item, the property owner has brought the property into sufficient compliance at this time, so we will be recommending either a declining to approve the ordinance, or rejecting it, and so it would be up to the will of council if you would like to see the information and talk to our chief code enforcement officer, or if council would like to move forward with action at this time.
One of the wishes of council in respect to the item, would you like to see a presentation from Mr. Renner, or ask him questions, or would you like to hear what Mrs. Hawk just said, and make this, make this one vanish, because of the amount of work that has been done on the unit? Mr. Rivenbar?
Mr. Renner, I assume you agree with what Ms. Hawk has said, good enough for me.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Everhart, so, we just, what's, do we take a formal vote?
The preference, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if you could just take a motion, take a vote to deny the, the ordinance.
Okay, do we have a motion to deny the ordinance, as I have spoken into the record? We have a motion to deny by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by council member Rivenbar, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item, which is item PH4, which is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish the dwelling at 565-B Manly Avenue as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. Again, I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Hawk, Ms. Hawk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and same with this item, the property has been brought into sufficient compliance at this time, and we are satisfied and would support declining to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, we have a motion by council member Andrews, second by council member Rivenbar, to deny this one too, so with that, all in favor of that vote, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our ordinances. Oh, one is an ordinance adding Section 6-10 Certain Actions Prohibited on City Property to Chapter 6, Article 1 of the City of Wilmington Code. At this time, I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Hawk, Ms. Hawk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this item will be initially presented by city attorney, Meredith Everhart.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council, just want to go back over, before you take a vote on the ordinance, what we're voting on tonight, yes or no? The proposed ordinance in front of you has the following language at this time, the four primary premises are number, section A, occupy, camp, sleep, or place, erect, or utilize any tents, cooking equipment, or bedding between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, or such other times as prohibited by signage, rule, policy, regulation, or law. Section B is addressing personal effects being left unattended. Section C is about city parking decks and surface parking lots, being for parking and associated activities only, and prohibiting any other use. And section D is entrances to city facilities and associated areas being used for ingress and egress only. I've had multiple questions from many council members about various different sections of the ordinance, and so I just wanted to go over a couple of things with you before you have your discussion. Regarding the initial part of the ordinance, that this ordinance that is proposed is only valid on or within any property owned or leased by the city, it is not applicable to private property, that'll be left in the hands of private property owners to call and report trespass and other things, just as they always have in the past. With regard to section A, I'd like to address the fact that the section on camping, sleeping, occupying, erecting tents only applies between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 PM, so this is a, a section that only applies to nighttime. There are other manners that the city has in our code of addressing various different aspects of this ordinance, but, but there is no time limit on any of the others, this is only a nighttime application for the ordinance in section A. Section B is the section on personal effects being left unattended, that section applies 24 hours a day, it doesn't apply if you are sitting on, sitting on the sidewalk with your personal effects with you, sitting on a bench, sitting at a table, it only applies if you have left those personal effects unattended, and to be able to give city personnel the opportunity to clear those out of the way. Section C regarding city parking decks and surface parking lots would also apply for 24 hours a day, there is nothing in the city's current or proposed ordinance that would prevent an individual from sleeping in their car on a city street, there's been some discussion about that, streets versus other places, this would only apply to, this proposed ordinance would only prevent individuals from sleeping in their car in parking decks and surface lots, so it would not apply to city streets. Section D regarding entrances to city facilities, the city manager currently has the ability to trespass individuals from city buildings, and she has designated that authority to department directors who are responsible for those facilities and buildings, but this would give 24-hour application to essentially the trespass ordinance, and saying that city entrances to facilities and areas are for ingress and egress only, and no other use or use. uses are prohibited. This would also apply 24 hours a day whether city business is being conducted at those facilities at the time or not. This was the chart we handed out last time. I'm glad to answer any questions that you have about that. It has not changed since two weeks ago. There were several questions about the fact that this would be a misdemeanor, and so what I provided for you here is also in your handout that's at the dais, is the misdemeanor punishment chart. As written now, it would be a class three misdemeanor, which is at the bottom of your chart. If you see on the left-hand side for a class three misdemeanor under Section 1, that would be a fine only. The C stands for community punishment. It means, and that's what would apply if there are no prior convictions on the individual's criminal history. The next section, under Section 2, in the middle, you can see that, again, if you've got one to three prior convictions, it could only be a fine. If you have four prior convictions, then you, there could be some sort of intermediate punishment. It wouldn't be automatic jail time, but it could be a split sentence that would involve some jail time. But you would have to have four or more prior criminal convictions for that to be in effect. And Section 3, if you had five or more prior criminal convictions, CIA means community intermediate or active, and that's the point where it could actually be a straight active sentence. So those are the, just to explain the chart, and Mr. Joyner could probably do a lot better job at that than I could, but, but that is for your information regarding class three misdemeanor punishments. The punishment under the proposed ordinance, as I mentioned, North Carolina general statutes allows the city to make violations of city ordinance, either a class three misdemeanor or an infraction. It's currently written as a class three misdemeanor. It could be an infraction. That'd be up to city council. If the city's silent about punishment in the ordinance, then it would just be a civil penalty. And so most of our ordinances are City Code violations. Those are just civil penalties. Most of the ones that have to do with quality of life issues, however, we've declared to be misdemeanors. We could, however, make it, make it an infraction. Punishment for a class three misdemeanor, however, is a fine of $500. No jail time is possible, again, unless there are more than four prior convictions. State law also says that a person can't be found guilty of a local ordinance violation if they can show proof of one of the following, either that there are no new violations within 12 months of the initial violation. So if they were convicted once, but then didn't have another conviction for the same offense within the next 12 months, it would be off their record. And that's true for all class three misdemeanors. Similarly, if they could show documentation of a good faith effort to seek assistance or to address any of the underlying factors related to either unemployment, homelessness, mental health, substance abuse, that might relate to their ability to comply with the ordinance, then that would, that would also lead to a dismissal. And these are, this is true for either a class three misdemeanor or an infraction, either way you go. An infraction is a noncriminal violation, for your information, so it is not punishable by imprisonment, no matter how many convictions you have on your criminal record or what type. And the fine in that case is no more than $100 as a maximum. I also did some research into camping ordinances in other cities, mostly the top 10 cities in, in North Carolina, to get some comparables as to what other cities do. I found several that have no camping ordinance at all. Cary, High Point, Greensboro. I found multiple ones where camping is prohibited on all public property. That's also punishable as a misdemeanor. That includes Charlotte. There's applies both day and night. There's not a nighttime restriction of that. That's been in effect since 2012. Raleigh has a no camping ordinance anywhere overnight, and then they have another part of their ordinance that says no camping or sleeping on certain, on particular streets, which are mostly in their downtown core during the day, that applies 24 hours, as long as a shelter is available for them 24 hours. Fayetteville does have a camping ordinance. It only applies when an overnight shelter is available. Asheville has an ordinance that has been recently revised since COVID in both 2021 and 2023 of no camping, tents for storage, of personal belongings on city property at any time of day. Concord's ordinance applies both day and night and appears to have been about the same time as Charlotte's. There are other variations as well on what other cities do in response to their camping ordinances. Durham doesn't have a camping ordinance. Specifically, they use their trespass ordinance, and they specify that it includes conduct that is dangerous, unlawful, or unreasonably disruptive. And that's a new ordinance from them that they just, they just did in 2023. Winston-Salem, their ordinance, they also have a, they have a sleeping ordinance, not a camping ordinance. It only applies to sleeping. It still makes it a misdemeanor, but you can't sleep on public property any time of the day in public. Asheville also has some other ordinances that are much older, from 2002, against sleeping specifically, and also against, quote, loitering on public property. Most cities have done away with loitering because it's been found constitutionally vague in, in other situations. And so Asheville doesn't actually use the loitering part of their ordinance anymore to enforce it. They use their newer ordinances from '21 and '23. Cary has an ordinance for no overnight camping in parks specifically. They also say no sleeping on benches, seats, or tables, or sidewalks, or streets, or parking areas. They've had that since 1998. It's also a misdemeanor. And Savannah has a no camping on public rights of way. And Savannah defines camping, though, to be objectively using the area as a living accommodation. So it's a very much stricter definition of what, of what camping is, and they just did that in June of, of 2025. With that, I'm open to any questions or any other discussion that you'd like to have.
Does anybody have any questions for Meredith? Thank you, Meredith. Waddell?
Yeah, if I may, before we get into it, I just want to say we've had some difficult, and at times, some tense discussions about this ordinance over the last month, both here at council and out in the community. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I think it's important to have difficult discussions. I'm actually proud of the discussion and the engagement that this has received, even, even the engagement from folks with my name on a sign. You know, I think it's important that the community is engaged. Shows how much people care about this issue and about, and about, about our, our community. Part of our job, as I see it, as elected officials, is to have these tough conversations and to work together in good faith to try to solve problems in our community. For the most part, over this last month, that's what I've, what I've experienced with my colleagues, and I just want to say before we get into it that I do truly appreciate that. I also just want to note that I am the city council representative on Wilmington Downtown Inc. I've heard some, from some downtown business owners here tonight, but I've heard directly from WDI about the feedback they've gotten from downtown business owners. I believe all of you were sent an email from, official email from Wilmington Downtown Inc. supporting the proposed ordinance tonight. Their concerns, obviously, were a, were a major driver and a big part of why this ordinance is in front of us today. I think their voice certainly matters and deserves to be heard as well. I'm not going to rehash everything, you know, that was said about a month ago and has been said by me over the last month, right here now, including, you know, things I've said in the last meetings. I'm sure we'll have more discussion before us. We have a vote tonight, and I welcome that discussion, but I just wanted to kind of level set this discussion with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joyner?
I'm just going to jump right in with a motion. And, and we've had a lot of time to think about this, and I've had a lot of time to write some thoughts that I have down, and I, I really don't want to shoot from the hip tonight, so forgive me for reading some things that are prepared ahead of time. So the first thing that I want to address relates to sleeping in vehicles overnight. And in all the feedback that I've gotten, no one has complained about people who are sleeping in their vehicles. Not one single criticism has come to my attention that sleeping in vehicles overnight is in any way associated with the conduct that the proponents of this ordinance have brought forward under a criminal misdemeanor structure. That piece of the ordinance is merely copy and pasted from the ordinance passed by the county commissioners in 2022. And one person shared with us that people who are living out of their cars are perhaps the most likely to self-resolve out of homelessness. Chronic homelessness the quickest because they have vehicles that allow them to get to work, to school, to doctor's appointments. Additionally, there is an ongoing movement within southeastern North Carolina to identify and organize this cohort of our homeless neighbors. The Safe Parking Initiative is a group of churches who want to use their own parking lots on a rotating basis to provide consistent, predictable locations for people who are living out of their cars. The Safe Parking Initiative aims to operate on the property of faith groups because religious organizations have legal protections that allow them to use their property to further their stated missions. And members of the stated parking, excuse me, Safe Parking Initiative have said that included in their mission is the desire to help people living out of their cars to access safe, consistent, predictable locations, which means consistent and predictable interactions with other service providers. It's also providing safety and numbers for people who sleep in their cars overnight. The group will screen participants so that they are, quote, unquote, "known entities" to the churches and organizations providing the services and that they have ties to the region. They're still recruiting faith groups to participate, and they aim to have a total of 12 so that one hosts a week of safe parking each quarter. And I think that we should support this work and this group of people who are, again, the most likely to self-resolve out of homelessness. They should not be subject to a criminal misdemeanor ordinance. I move to strike and remove subsection C of Section 2 of the proposed ordinance, which pertains to city parking decks and surface lots.
Okay, very good. Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, so we heard from a lot of people tonight. First...
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I've made a motion. I'd like a second. I'd like to know if there's a second and a vote on that motion.
So you go ahead and make the motion. A motion by councilmember Joyner, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Discussion?
Okay.
Ms. Andrews?
I just wanted to ask Dylan, where, I can't even see him. Thank you. If you could put up, I had a couple of pictures I wanted to show so that we could see the, the faces of our neighbors that this ordinance is addressed to.
We haven't, we, excuse me, so get clarity here. We have a motion by Mr. Joyner, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, in respect to the camping ordinance and sleeping in cars, eliminating that from this discussion, correct?
Yes.
And so, and now at this time, we're in, in discussion, and Ms. Andrews has the floor?
Yeah, thank you. So as several people said, this ordinance doesn't solve homelessness. It just punishes people for being homeless. These are a couple of guys I met a couple of weeks ago, and this is Donald and Jeffrey. And when I talked to them and I asked them what they would like me to tell council is that they just need a roof. They just need a roof over their heads. And just, then, the next picture. Okay. And this is Zee. And I first met Zee via WECT story on August 5th, and she is 23 years old, and she aged out of the foster care system at the age of 18, and she's been on the streets ever since. And so I want you to just, if you could just leave her picture up there while I, I tell you the rest of this. So I think it's really striking tonight, this is the, the very night that this ordinance is being discussed, that the mayor issued a proclamation declaring September 17th through 23rd is Constitution Week. To celebrate the Constitution while simultaneously considering an ordinance that erodes the rights that it protects is a contradiction too sharp to ignore. Now, let's be clear, downtown Wilmington faces real issues. Blocked doorways, litter, disruptive behavior, these are legitimate concerns for residents and businesses. But almost all of those behaviors are already illegal. This ordinance does nothing to address them. What it would do is criminalize sleeping in a car, in a surface parking lot. It would also, unless we pass this amendment, it would also prohibit occupying or resting on public property between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. And on its face, this language criminalizes the simple act of existing in a public space overnight. More troubling, it undermines constitutional principles in several ways. The First Amendment guarantees this free speech and assembly. That means public spaces, streets, sidewalks, and parks are traditional forums for expression and assembly. A blanket prohibition on occupying could stifle vigils and demonstrations. It affects due process, which is guaranteed by the 14th Amendment. The ordinance's vague use of the words occupy and rest raise serious questions. Does it mean sitting on a bench, resting with belongings, participating in a protest? Vague laws invite arbitrary enforcement. The 14th Amendment also guarantees equal protection, so even if the law seems neutral, it disproportionately affects people experiencing homelessness who have no alternative spaces for shelter. Criminalizing overnight presence punishes people for circumstances beyond their control. If Wilmington wishes to honor the Constitution, not just in words, but in practice, the path forward is clear. Reject measures that criminalize presence and instead pursue compassionate, constitutional solutions to the challenges of homelessness and public space. This is not an abstract or legal, an abstract legal debate. Tonight's decision will shape how we treat both our unhoused neighbors and our constitutional traditions. Will we recognize that peaceful presence in public space has long been a vehicle for justice? Or will we risk criminalizing existence itself in the very places where freedom is meant to be exercised? The choice will say as much about our city's values as any proclamation ever could. Passing this ordinance also fails to solve the real problems of homelessness, which requires consistent enforcement of existing laws, effective partnerships with service providers, and investments in shelters, transitional housing, and supportive care. At our August 18th work session, we heard that chronic homelessness can cost $35,000 per person per year in jail and ER visits. And so with 268 unsheltered individuals in Wilmington, that's nearly $9.4 million a year, that we're already paying for the problem and criminalizing it doesn't reduce the cost or help anyone. I see a lot of signs about our, our housing crisis. As of this summer, the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in New Hanover County is $1,351. That requires a full-time wage of nearly $26 an hour to afford without being rent burden. Many of our nurses, teachers, first responders, and hospitality workers earn less than that. And Zee, a 23-year-old woman who aged out of the foster care system, has no family, has no way, she aged, like many of the, the people who age out of the foster care system, at least half of them, she didn't graduate with a degree. So she's going to Cape Fear to get her degree. She has no hope of earning $26 an hour full-time at this point and finding herself an apartment. The ordinance before us tonight doesn't do any of that. It doesn't solve the problem. It only punishes people for experience it, experiencing it, and I urge my colleagues to vote now. Thank you.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, I just have a question, just clarification on the motion that's on the floor. It is simply to strike item C in Section 2 that reads, "City parking decks and surface parking lots are for parking and associated activities, therefore other uses are prohibited." That, the motion's on the floor?
That's what I understand. But I, I do have, since we're still in discussion and since, and we'll have some more clarity because I, I would like to add something, and I think it's very important that I share this with this community. This has been a very emotional issue, to say the least. And back in 2007, when we created the Ten Year Plan in Homelessness, that was a George W. Bush initiative at the time, this community came together, the city and the county spent a lot of time, created committees to evaluate all of the things that we need to address this very serious issue. If it was easy to fix, it would have already been fixed because every major city in America is dealing with it. Every city in the state of North Carolina is dealing with it. We're seeing pictures from the West Coast to the East Coast. It's not an easy solution to a very complex and complicated problem, to say the least. And I can assure you, I think all seven of us up here, you elect us to try to find solutions to complex problems. You know, where to spend the money, how to spend the money, what should we do, what shouldn't we do? And it is, and it's not easy, but we do the best that we can, and we're all passionate about it. I don't think there's anybody in here or sitting up here that drives by and sees a homeless person and says, "We want to criminalize them." That's the last thing that any of us want to do. Hold on, excuse me for, excuse me for a second, please. Okay? That's not what we want to do here. And I can assure you, if you talk to your sheriff or you talk to your DA, they don't want to do it either. And if you talk to your police officers, they don't want to do it either. But we also have, we also, we also have other citizens to contend with and deal with besides just downtown, okay? Downtown is where we heard a lot of it, and that... Downtown is where we heard a lot of it, and that was the impact that we were hearing, and that's the reason that Mr. Waddell, I believe, brought forward a camping ordinance, okay? Everybody was being impacted by this downtown, but this is being all over the community. And all of you, and I welcome any of you, to do a ride along with any of our police officers that are out there working in the camps. There are a lot of homeless camps in every part of our city. It's not just downtown, it's everywhere. And I would, and I would also say that in any wooded area in this community, wherever it may be, I'm sure there are homeless people that are there. I've come across them myself. I've talked into a lot of the providers, and by the way, since August the 19th, I have spent a lot of time going to speak to providers, speaking to our district attorney, speaking to the police chief, speaking to the people that are out there being impacted by this. There is also an ordinance on the books that if you do have, happen to have a homeless camp that may end up on a piece of property that you may own on your backyard, you're responsible, if it's a private property owner, to clean that yard up. We had a elderly lady here about eighty-some years of age that had a piece of property. She wasn't even aware that there was an encampment there, and she got fined $34,000 because the ordinance called for it. Now, there was a lot of churches and nonprofits and people helped her clean that yard up, but she was responsible for it. So we, as citizens, are responsible to clean up our own properties, whether we like it or not. That's just part of, that's the law. So we, we hold citizens responsible. So this is a very complex issue, as I said, and since we're all here tonight, and it gives me the opportunity to also share with this community, and for those of us that are watching us, I want to be able to share with you what this city has done, because out of all of the levels of government, city governments are at the low end of the totem pole. State government is a pretty big government. Counties are extension of county governments. They, I mean, state governments, they handle our public health, mental health, human services, social services. They handle all of that, and they play a big role in our community, and they have to be at the table. So if you'll give me just a few minutes, so I can share with you what we, as a city, have done, because I think it's important that you understand what role that we're playing, and what we have spent, and what we will continue to spend, and what this government here locally has done, all of us, and the money that we have appropriated for a lot of the issues that you folks are holding up signs for and talking about here this evening. So if you'll allow me, please. Thank you. I've read some prepared text, and I usually don't do this, but I like, but I, there was so much here, I needed to do this, so excuse me for reading from the text, but I will. Homelessness is both a humanitarian issue and a community issue, affecting both public health, safety, as well as economic vitality. According to the Cape Fear Continuum of Care, 558 people experienced homelessness on a given night. Last point in count was 2023, in Wilmington, Brunswick County, New Hanover County, and Pender Counties, and I'm sure that number is higher. Based on the same data, there was an average of 22 homeless persons per 10,000 residents. For the Wilmington population of 127,316 people, that equates to an average homeless population of Wilmington of 293 persons. Homelessness is not a single problem, but a complex set of circumstances that can include lack of affordable housing, true, mental health challenges, true, and substance use disorders, among other things, true. The issue is compounded by rising housing costs, true, and limited supply of affordable units, insufficient shelter space for families, youth, and individuals with specific needs, gaps in supportive services such as mental health. For any of you that have had to go through the mental health services, it's a disaster, and we all know that. And that should have been fixed in Congress many years ago, but we're still waiting for that. And addiction treatment, and visible encampments that raise community concerns and reflect deeper systemic issues in our community. In downtown Wilmington, there is an increasing critical need to balance both public safety and enforcement, particularly in supporting small businesses, while ensuring compassionate, responsive, and long-lasting solutions for those experiencing homelessness. Wilmington experiences added strain as individuals from neighboring counties come here to access the majority of regional services concentrated within the city. And this is very important, because I've asked about the services, because I'm hearing it from our police officers, I'm also hearing it from service providers, from Onslow County, Jacksonville area, which today has 212,000 people. Ori County, which we're also here, we're getting people from there, 461,000 people. Brunswick County, that is approaching over 200,000 people, which is also the fastest-growing county in the state of North Carolina, and the 11th fastest-growing county in the country out of 3,083 counties. And Pender County, which is also approaching over, almost 100,000 people, not including New Hanover County with almost 240,000 people. We have 26 providers, all located within the small geographic area of Wilmington, North Carolina, which is 52 square miles. So if people are looking for services in any of those areas, and yet service is not provided, a lot of those folks are saying, "We don't have the service here, go to Wilmington." Nothing wrong with that, we understand it. Our community is compassionate, and our community has been stepping up, and our community has been doing the job. We're going to start asking our other community partners, what are they doing to help do services in their counties? And that has to be a discussion that we all have, because it all cannot be concentrated in one specific area. Shared responsibilities, I just talked about. Effectively addressing homelessness requires coordinated action from the government, true. Service providers, true. The faith community, which has been stepping up, true. Healthcare partners, local businesses, as well as youth residents. And for the year 2026, the city of Wilmington invested $73,160 in administrative support for the Continuum of Care, a regional coalition that coordinates housing and services, funding to help people experiencing homelessness move towards stability as well as self-sufficiency. This investment far exceeds the contributions of neighboring counties. $13,500 from Brunswick County. Zero from New Hanover County. And $5,000 from Pender County. And underscores Wilmington's leadership in addressing homelessness across the region, but lasting progress require shared responsibility and a true regional commitment. That's why we were trying to have the meeting in 2024 with our county partners. It's important that they are at the table. When specifically combating the affordable housing crisis, a key contributor to homelessness, the city of Wilmington is proud to work alongside organizations at every level, from federal and state agencies to regional networks and local committees, including HUD, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience, the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, the Continuum of Care, and the Wilmington Housing Authority, which by the way, is not an authority under the city of Wilmington, but is run by HUD. The long-term commitment to housing, some people ask, put up their signs about housing. The city of Wilmington has demonstrated a strong commitment to affordable housing since 2001. Yes, the sustained effort has included leveraging federal programs, collaborating with nonprofit organizations, and dedicating, dedicating, local tax revenue and government resources to housing projects. Let me also say this, tonight, all the counties, all the cities in this area, we are the only government that has an affordable housing program. Check it out. In 2023, the city dedicated a one-cent property tax to affordable housing programs to a range of affordable housing initiatives, including gap financing to support new developments, homeownership assistance, and safety and health-based home repairs. In 2026, the city remains committed to providing stable housing options by dedicating 67 cents of the property tax rate, which is $2.3 million. In 2024, the city establishes a dedicated housing and neighborhood services department to strengthen communities through housing initiatives, code enforcement, engagement, education, and neighborhood safety. Since 2013, more than 210 households have benefited directly from city housing programs that support residents through homeownership, providing house counseling, offer owner-occupied rehabilitation loans, and incentivize rental rehabilitation. Cornerstone Housing Project, since 2022, the city of Wilmington has supported the construction of more than 620 affordable housing units across many projects, including Canopy Point, 72 units for seniors, Sterling Reserve, 56 units, Starway Village, 278 units, The Sparrow, which is housing with supportive services for the homeless, 32 units, Avenue Flats, 184 units, The Pines at Manley, 128 units, and Block by Block, 7 units, among others. Starway Village, for those of you who go down Carolina Beach Road, you see that big project that's being built there, is the largest public-private affordable housing partnership in North Carolina history, and it's happening here in this community. It is backed by $4.25 million from the city of Wilmington and supported at both local as well as state levels. The project exemplifies the city's longstanding strategy of maximizing impact by leveraging public funds through private partnerships and federal program. It provides 278 units for households earning 30% of AMI, 60% of AMI, and 80% of AMI, supporting essential workers, nurses, teachers, as well as first responders. The Sparrow is a permanent supportive housing community that will provide affordable housing with wraparound services for 32 chronically homeless adults with significant disabilities. The city of Wilmington supported this project by donating the land of an old fire station and allocating American Rescue Plan capital and pre-development funds of over $1 million for those that are chronically homeless. And we did it at Lakeside Reserve with 40-some units. Again, I ask what other government is doing it? Check it out. The city has supported the preservation of 89, 89 affordable housing units through Cape Fear's collective rehabilitation project and the redevelopment of Gervais by the Wilmington Housing Authority. Social services, by design, counties, not cities, hold the primary responsibility for delivering social services. Check it out. While the city of Wilmington is deeply invested in supporting its residents, the provision of core social services, such as health and human services, falls under the county's jurisdiction rather than the municipal government, but we will continue to do our part. While the city of Wilmington recognizes that health and human services fall under county jurisdiction, the city continues to invest in its residents through strong community partnerships. In 2025, the city awarded $720,647 to 36 key partners delivering services in critical areas such as youth development and education, housing, shelter, family support, safety, food security, workforce development, and economic empowerment and healthy recovery. It's in our, it's in our budget, it's online, it's your budget. Check it out. In December of 2016, the city council created a municipal service district, better known as the MSD, you've heard that being said here tonight, for the central business district effective July 1, 2017. The MSD is designed to provide additional services downtown, including ambassadors for safety and security, supplemental cleaning, beautification amenities, enhanced economic development, and targeted marketing and branding. In 2025, the MSD ambassadors in downtown handled 907 maintenance requests, with 302 of those related to homelessness, including clearing trash from small encampments. The downtown MSD ambassador's outreach coordinator position is funded by the city of Wilmington at $88,454. And by the way, that gentleman, Jack Morris, who is our ambassador, that is the outreach programmer, that reaches out to the people that are unsheltered, currently is serving 122 homeless individuals, trying to provide service for them, and does a heck of a job. If you haven't met him, you should. And is expected to engage with members of the unhoused population, with an emphasis on building trust, offering support, and connecting individuals to available resources. And that is a tax that is paid in addition to what any other property tax owner has if you live in that MSD, that they pay for it themselves. Supportive regulations, in 2021, the city adopted a new land development code that includes density bonuses for people that are developing property, who dedicate at least 10% of their units to households earnings 80% or less of the area median income. With a minimum affordable period of 15 years, since then, six projects have been approved under these provisions, resulting in a total of 350 units of designated workforce housing units. Funding, the city of Wilmington has contributed over $5.5 million in homeless services over the past five years. By leveraging general funds as well as community development block grants, CDBG, which is something that was created under the Lyndon Johnson administration, and home investment partnerships program, better known as home funds allocated by HUD, the city's financial commitment to affordable housing has reached more than $57 million to date. I challenge any other government in this region to say that. Looking ahead, the city of Wilmington remains committed to investing in supportive services. This fall and winter, council will consider additional funding allocations through home and CDBG programs to further strengthen the community's response to homelessness, because it is a serious issue. Finding a path forward, while the city of Wilmington has made great strides and invested significant resources in addressing homelessness, gaps remain in achieving a truly regional strategy. The city's goal is to strengthen partnerships across government, nonprofits, healthcare, and the private sector, so that no single entity carries the burden alone. Nobody can do this by themselves. No government can, no individual, no nonprofit can. We have to work collectively as a community. And I can assure you that every one of us up here on council are, will tell you that we want to do that with anybody that wants to work with us. In the meantime, the city continues to add innovative strategy that addresses both immediate needs and long-term solutions. This week, this council is voting on this. Following the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in June of 2024 in the city of Grants Pass versus Johnson, which upheld city's authorities to ban camping in public spaces. Many communities have acted quickly. According to Stateline Pew Charitable Trust, about 150 cities in 32 states have adopted or strengthened such ordinances, and Reuters simily reports that more than 160 jurisdictions nationwide have enacted comparable measures. The language of the proposed ordinance is substantially similar to the one that New Hanover County put in in 2023 that prohibits camping or sleeping directly on city property overnight, not in vehicles, leaving personal belongings unattended, ordering in parking decks, and blocking building entrances. The city's proposed ordinance gives public safety officers the authority to act when necessary, and at the same time, the city's broader strategy remains grounded in the commitment to put social services first and use enforcement only when needed. And there's a concern about that, and rightfully so. I understand that. Adopting, and this is where I'm going to come in here. I do not want to criminalize this. I've been working on this since 2007. I've got Stephanie Walker with the county here, and I know she is very committed to it, and first and foremost, I will send a letter tomorrow morning to our county counterparts and ask them to reengage with the city, with this community, so that we can all talk with one voice, because we're going to need their resources, folks. This is not going to be done alone by us. And I hope I have shared our commitment to this community as to what we are doing. I will also tell you that several years ago, this city and this county, believe it or not, sued the opioid distributors, and we were one of the first cities and counties, when people were telling us not to do it, to do it. And we won. I was invited to a federal courthouse in Cleveland, Ohio, with at the time Chairman Woody White. And the argument that we were making before the federal judge was, if this settlement were to happen, that that money should not go to cap, to the states, like they did with the tobacco settlement. It should go to the communities that are being impacted by this, because at the end of the day, people need recovery. I don't need some state legislature, excuse me, to the state legislature, to tell us how to spend our money where we're the ones being impacted by that. To date, because of that settlement, to date, and there's more coming... To date, because of that settlement, to date, and there's more coming, this county has received twenty-six million dollars to go toward recovery efforts of a scourge that we should all be appalled about. To sit in a courtroom in Cleveland, Ohio, and to hear the distributors of opioids admit that they had distributed the amounts of opioids that addicted so many people and killed so many people made me sick to my stomach, and it should have made you too. We have a committee that we have set up between the city and the county, that I know that Mr. Waddell sits on and others, to talk about the best way to distribute those funds to help those with addiction issues, because that's part of the homeless issue also. Okay? And so that is a very important issue. And I will tell you that right now, we lead with services first, and I'm going to ask the city manager and this council into this ordinance, that we hire four social workers, caseworkers, that are embedded with our department, so that the first time we meet people on the street that need services, the service provider engages them. It will come with a significant cost, ladies and gentlemen, and I hope that you support that, but if we're really serious about this, like people are saying, do not criminalize this, then for the love of God, let's get the service providers, because what I saw in the QRT, which is the Quick Response Team, in the aftermath of the opioid epidemic, when we created a team of first responders along with social workers, eighteen-hundred-and-ten contacts with people that had basically overdosed, where we had revived them with Narcan. Out of those eight-hundred, eighteen-hundred-and-ten people, fifteen-hundred-and-sixty-six of them sought treatment when we contacted them. I know it works, and I know one of the things that we're lacking right here is to be able to go to them and say, we've got help for you, we've got providers here, we've got people here, we're going to need more resources, but the contact should be with the social worker, the police should be engaged just in the event of some incident for protection, for help to that social worker, because they're going out at all hours of the time of night, but the first response is with the social worker, not a police officer. And the other thing that I do not want to do, excuse me, excuse me, I have the floor, I'm sorry, ma'am. The other thing that I will also ask for those of you that are concerned about the criminalization, that we do not make this a class-three misdemeanor, but that we make it an infraction. That totally takes it out of the criminalization part of it. And then the other thing that I am going to say is this, one of the other things I am going to say, and we're going to need help on, I have a lot of, some providers in here, some folks that have some great ideas. The city has a multitude of different properties, and I'm going to ask the city manager to evaluate all of those properties, bring it back to the city council, and we will give that property to a nonprofit or to an organization that will help us with a low barrier place for people to go to. Okay? But saying that, listen very carefully, saying that, I'm going to also make certain that all of these services are not congregated in a specific neighborhood either, because I have heard from the community, and I've heard from Mr. Spears and others, that some of these services are concentrated in a particular part of our community, and that's not right. And we will look at that, and then we will evaluate it, but I will also say that we will also need the neighbor's support to make it happen with some sort of a program, and that's something that I am very committed to, because that is one of the things that we hear from a lot of folks, we need a low-entry recovery center where people can go to a shelter, whether they're on drugs, whatever the case may be, and that's critically important. So, Mr. Joyner, that's my, I'd like to amend that, to add that to this ordinance, to add that to that ordinance, to put in the service providers, the four service providers, yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
I'm not certain that we can actually add that into the ordinance, because it's got to go through the budget process of adding the positions, we could...
I don't care about that, we can find the money to do that. That's the commitment we're going to make, and if we have to take it out of, we have committed two-hundred-and-eighty-three for two-hundred-and-eighty-three police officers, we have appropriated funding, I know that we're down on officers, we can use some of that money if necessary, I will let the city manager figure that one out. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I believe what the city attorney is suggesting is that the coresponders, social workers, can absolutely be created and funded out of this year's budget, but that can be separate from the actual ordinance, since the ordinance is a specific code, that the positions can still be created, but it can be separate from any specific action related to...
Okay, very good, I agree, very good, all right, very good. So I'd like to make that as an amendment in respect to the decriminalization to infraction?
Yes, sir, and that would read, there is a piece at the bottom that says, let's see, I believe it's currently after Section F, so we would remove Mr. Joyner's section, so now that would be the last section...
It's not my section.
The section you requested to remove.
I'd like to remove subsection C, yes.
Yes, so we'd remove the section Mr. Joyner requested, and then at the bottom, it would say, any violation of Section six-dash-ten shall constitute an infraction, where now it says misdemeanor.
I would accept that for as a friendly amendment.
Okay, very good. Okay, Ms. Spears?
I appreciate all of the banter about this ordinance tonight, but I'm going to respectfully ask Councilman Joyner to pull his motion, so that we can deny Councilman Waddell's motion, and then we can go back to the drawing board with the additions that the mayor has made. I don't think we need to pass a weakened version of criminalization or whatever it is to appease people in this community. I understand downtown Wilmington that you need help, I've said that before, and I don't know how you perceived it, but I hear you, I understand, we need help, there are issues all over this community, but we do not need to pass this ordinance. I'm asking Mr. Joyner to respectfully pull this motion, let's deny this motion, and then you as the mayor, or us as the city council, can direct our leader, the city manager, to make the proper adjustments for positions for social workers, and so the bare bones of this thing is already in place, and we're just going to go with that. So, Mr. Joyner, I would ask respectfully that you pull this motion, so that we could just deny Councilman Waddell's motion and move forward. Thank you.
I'm going to return to some comments that I made earlier. Could we put the misdemeanor punishment chart back on the screen? So the last meeting, I thought that I gave a helpful explanation of how attorneys work with this every day, I watched the playback and realized that it probably was not quite that helpful, and so forgive me if I go a little bit long here, but I want to talk about this in greater detail, and if we can get the chart back up, that would be helpful, because I want to walk through a couple of different pieces of it, and why I do not think that a criminal misdemeanor ordinance is appropriate, but why I think that infraction might still resolve some issues, and I have a couple of different points here. And I do need that up before I get started, because I want to start at the very top with Class A-one aggravated level-one misdemeanors. So every, and as they're pulling that up, every day, judges, prosecutors, and criminal defense attorneys all across North Carolina use that document when someone is convicted of a criminal misdemeanor to determine what punishment the convicted person is subject to. You begin by identifying the offense level, you begin by identifying the defense level, and as you have heard, we're talking about a class-three misdemeanor at the bottom of the chart in this case, and to contextualize this, we're going to start at the top with Class A-one or aggravated one criminal misdemeanors. This include offenses, this includes offenses like a first offense for stalking, a first offense for violating a domestic violence protective order or restraining order, and assault on a female by a male person over the age of eighteen. If we drop down to a Class One misdemeanor, criminal misdemeanors in the Class One category often include offenses like assault on a sports official, breaking or entering a building, and larceny of property less than one thousand dollars. Class Two criminal misdemeanors include offenses like resisting a public officer, false report to law enforcement, and boating while impaired, but we're focused on Class Three criminal misdemeanors. That includes things like taking a shopping cart from a store's premises or throwing objects onto the field at a sporting event. But I think the most important note about a Class Three misdemeanor is that it is a general regulatory authority offense. Class Three misdemeanors are common for traffic offenses, operating a vehicle without a driver's license, failure to properly register a vehicle, unlawfully dark window tinning. Class Three misdemeanors are often, excuse me, also govern hunting and fishing laws when certain species are in or out of season, and the size of animals taken when hunting or fishing. Class Three offenses also govern agricultural standards for the sale of apples and tobacco by growers, and in general, we see that Class Three misdemeanors, unlike the higher level of offenses, govern conduct where the government seems to say, there is a right way and a wrong way to do this, if you are going to engage in this type of conduct, you must do so in a proper, clearly defined way that is readily available and which protects you and others, otherwise, you commit a crime. To me, that's why a criminal misdemeanor ordinance is not appropriate. When we tell someone who is chronically homeless that we are regulating when and where they can sleep outside, we are not saying to them, there is a right and a wrong way to do this, if you are going to engage in this type of conduct, you must do so in the proper, clearly defined way that is readily available, because we do not have a proper, clearly defined way that is readily available for them. It is accurate that the Supreme Court of the United States decided last year in a case called City of Grants Pass versus Johnson, that cities do not legally need a proper, clearly defined, and readily available alternative in order to enact criminal misdemeanors against camping on public property by chronically homeless folks. But the authority to make something a crime in and of itself is a poor reason to put a new crime on the books. So, turning our attention back to the chart, after determining the misdemeanor offense class, here are Class Three, the judges, prosecutors, and criminal defense lawyers must look at the convicted person's criminal record to determine how severe the punishment can be. And Madam Attorney did a fine job of explaining to us that somebody who's been convicted of no prior criminal offenses cannot spend a day in jail on this, no judge in New Hanover County can sentence them to jail time. For one, two, or three prior convictions, no judge in New Hanover County can sentence them to jail time. Only for four or more prior convictions, or five or more prior convictions, they could possibly get active time, but as she also pointed out, the community and intermediate punishment, I'm going to get to the money piece, I see somebody back there doing this, we're going to talk about the fine. Talking about the community and the intermediate punishment piece, we're talking about probation, and I have worked with nine district court judges in New Hanover County, five Republicans and four Democrats, and none of them, none of them are going to put somebody on probation for a Class Three misdemeanor for violating a city ordinance. So, I want to remind us that the New Hanover County Commissioners, in passing the county's version in 2022, removed a fifty-dollar fine from their ordinance. They seem to agree that it did not make logical sense to punish poverty with a crime. So why would we put a new crime, a newly arrestable offense, on the books for people to be taken to jail when they cannot actually be sentenced by a judge to spend time in jail after a conviction? I want to push back on this idea that in order to give law enforcement a new tool in the toolbox, we need to add a new crime to the books. Tool in the toolbox of law enforcement was a phrase that was used at the last meet, at the last time we discussed this and had it on our agenda, it's been repeated tonight. So let's talk about the legality of why exactly a criminal misdemeanor ordinance might be considered a tool in the toolbox for law enforcement. The reason is that without legal authority passed by a city council, or a county commission, or the state legislature, law enforcement officers are government actors and are bound by the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution, which prohibits against unreasonable searches and seizures. And generally, when we think of the Fourth Amendment, we think about privacy rights in our homes, and the fact that the government can't come in without a search warrant, but it also pertains to seizures on the street. Law enforcement officers cannot arrest and detain people unless they have some specific interest in the Fourth Amendment that would grant them the ability to do so, they would have to express reasonable, articulable suspicion of a specific offense. Otherwise, the individual detained would have the right to tell law enforcement no or to not engage with them at all. And so I think it's appropriate that Councilmember Andrews pointed out that we've identified this upcoming week as Constitution Week, and that we're talking about the Fourth Amendment and the Bill of Rights, because this is also a civil liberties concern. Let me be clear about this, I do believe that law enforcement has an important role to play in homelessness, just as there is a poverty component to this, an addiction component, a mental illness component, an affordable housing component, a domestic violence and family life component, it's multifaceted, and law enforcement does have a role to play, because as we heard, we have five-hundred-and-fifty-eight, probably more, folks who are chronically homeless, and I'm not at all saying that those five-hundred-and-fifty-eight people are committing crimes, but those five-hundred-and-fifty-eight people are at a heightened risk of being the victims of crimes. I agree with the folks that have the signs that say homelessness involves vulnerability. They deserve the protection of the law, nobody's above the law, nobody's beneath the law's protections, and so law enforcement does have a role to play in that as well. So if we're going to talk about a tool, the mayor has identified, and I've spoken with Madam City Manager about the coresponder model. The new police chief that we've hired, Chief Zudema, who's coming to us from Lynchburg, Virginia, has worked with a coresponder model there, there are cities all across the country that have introduced coresponder models, because the folks in law enforcement are being asked a lot more than what they signed up for when they decided to do that as a career. A lot of times, we're asking them more than what they've been trained on, they are not paramedics, they are not mental health crisis responders, they are not social workers. So I would like to see them paired with somebody in a coresponder model, coresponder model that resolves that, because right now, when folks don't know what to do, they call 911 and expect the police to come fix it. So, that does leave us with the question, what happens if somebody refuses services? And on the whole, I think that the vast majority of people who are experiencing homelessness in our community want, accept, and receive services when they are offered. There is certainly a question about what happens when somebody wants services, but there are not enough to go around. That is something that we're going to have to address, as hopefully we come back to the table with the county commission. But there are a very small number of folks who, when services are offered, refuse to participate, and I'm thinking about what I've seen in the criminal justice system related to addiction, and I think about the folks who I have helped get into criminal justice solutions that don't involve jail time, that involve probation with supervised probation, getting them into treatment programs, getting them into mental health counseling, and from that, we know that people who are using hard drugs like cocaine, methamphetamine, heroin, fundamentally changing their brain chemistry, and it takes months, it takes months of sobriety to get their brain chemistry back to a place where they can make decisions for themselves in a healthy way when it has gone too far. It is not compassionate for us to let that subgroup of people continue to languish outside. It is not compassionate to let them continue to deteriorate when they are so far gone that they cannot make decisions for themselves. And so there does, in my view, have to be a tool for law enforcement, along with the coresponder, to compel them to accept and use the services, and that can be done with an infraction, which is not a criminal measure, it does not come with, it's not on this chart, it does not come with sentencing points, it does not come with the option of jail time for a judge, it cannot be used, it's not even a guilty or not guilty situation, they don't get that far, it's about responsible or not responsible. And so I do want to see us move forward with the coresponder model, where the coresponder's job is to arrive at the scene and assess for behavioral health needs, psychological needs, and the law enforcement officer's job is to make sure that everybody on scene is safe. So with that, I would, I do accept the friendly amendment to reduce it to an infraction, I can support it with that change, and I would move the previous question.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, just to say, I said it last month, that I'm open to ideas, I'm open to collaboration, and, you know, what has resulted from this rather difficult and serious conversation is a coresponder model, something I'd never would have come up with, so kudos to whomever did. We have the capacity, apparently within our police budget, because we are fairly understaffed, but I believe that this will reduce a lot of the onerous work that is put on our police officers currently, because they're not social workers, I agree with that wholeheartedly. So I support that, and I'll support it through the budget process, certainly, and I think it was a good idea. I want to touch on, I do serve on the Joint City-County Opioid Committee, and when we first started that committee, when the funds were first about to be received, New Hanover County led the nation in opioid overdoses and deaths. Since we've implemented a really strong program created between the city and the county that has QRT teams, has Narcan in schools, I mean, it has some really incredible things, those numbers have gone down for the first time in a decade. So it's working, these things are working. I certainly still believe that enforcement mechanism is required for all the reasons that I put forward, and if an infraction... that I put forward. And if an infraction is the will of the board, I still, I could support that.
Mr. Ryan Bark?
This council and the councils before this have never been shy about spending money. When people would come to us with what we felt like were reasonable solutions, we have never shown them the door. We have always been open to doing anything we can. Sometimes you can't see the forest for the trees. And there's, one lady came up tonight and talked about so many different pushes to take care of this. And it's frustrating, because it seems like at the end of the day, you're back where you started. And this problem, you know, the number 552 gets tossed about, it's way more than 552. I know right now where there's a 300-person camp, just one. So it's a great deal more than that. And it's growing. And you stop and think sometimes, why isn't this problem down in Southport or Burgal or, it's here. This is where they come. We're a magnet for all of southeastern North Carolina and northeastern South Carolina. This is where they're coming, because we have the services. And for the last two or three weeks, I, along with the mayor and our city manager and by myself on certain occasions, I've talked to the people out there that do this for a living. And they want to help so bad, because this is what they do. It's like Don Skinner, who is a champion for this. I've known Don since he came to Wilmington. And it's, it's some of the thing, we see it up close and personal, just like you do. But we are trying, and I think that by the fact that Councilman Waddell brought this up, it kind of galvanized some of the folks out there. And it wouldn't be that way if it hadn't. And I think that, not the compromise, but I think that the amendment that we can do to this will go a long way. And let me finish by saying this. We're a municipality. We're within New Hanover County, but we are part of, we are New Hanover County. And sometimes that gets forgotten. And I won't go into a lot of, I have, my brother is over there on the county commission, and I know for a cold hard fact, he is very compassionate about this. And I think when the mayor sends that request over to him, I think they will come back to the table, because this is something that we can't do by ourselves. God knows we've tried. But when it comes tax time, next year's budget, I want every one of you all to come back down here and give us a thumbs up, because this isn't free. It costs a great deal of money. But is it worth it? Yeah, it's worth it. So that's my thoughts on this thing. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Barnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably the only person here who has been pastoring for 46 years, okay? And the thing that I've learned in pastoring is, for example, at Warner, where I pastor, we've actually been the church that housed the group that started thinking about and started looking into, how can we do parking lot helping the homeless, okay? And as Councilman Joyner said, those persons in their cars are the ones that are closest to getting back on their street, on their feet, okay? And the other thing that I do want you to understand is I've had an opportunity to, and Councilman Salet and I had an opportunity to talk with the group out of Raleigh. They do a program called Acorns. Acorns is similar to the suggestion that, well, the mayor has made, where we bring in social workers and together, social workers and police officers, go out and see about the need. Now, the thing that, of course, I want to keep us understanding is, of course, is that we're looking at people first, okay? How can we help people first? Now, and the other thing that I want us to kind of make sure that we put into this motion is that we bring this back, because sometimes we'll say something, and then we kind of let it not do what it's supposed to do. And so I've heard them saying that more officers have made the downtown better, but not just downtown. And we've also talked about not just putting these places where we're helping those who are less fortunate in certain neighborhoods or only in that neighborhood. So, you know, I'll agree with the amendment. I'm going to agree with the amendment. And I hope that we would consider what the mayor has said, using the funds so that we can in turn get social workers, clinical people, and they're the first responders. They're the first ones who show up and help to make the city theirs. But I just want to make sure that we don't leave it and just, you know, not monitor it. And they need to come back to us, I think, within, what, 90 days, 45 days, with that?
In respect to the property that we will give to a nonprofit as soon as possible, so that the manager can have an opportunity to evaluate it, bring it forward. And then we have to sit down and talk about where that, what property do we want to give to a nonprofit or an organization, excuse me?
Do that first.
Excuse me, to do that, okay? So she's going to come back to us as soon as possible, so we can evaluate that, because it will have an impact in a neighborhood or near a neighborhood. And that neighborhood needs to also be supportive, and there has to be a plan in place for any organization that does a low-barrier entry shelter. It's a must. That's got to be part of the process.
Mr. Waddell, did you have?
Just a bit of clarification on the low-barrier shelters. Is that part of this?
No, I'm asking.
This is just a city manager to look into that and bring it forward to us?
As soon as possible.
And we would have some sort of public hearing on wherever it would go?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, you ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of the motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Mayor Protem Barnett, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five to two. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilman Waddell, second by Councilman Ryan Bark. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Item passed, that item fails for lack of a unanimous, so it will hear at our next city council meeting. That brings us to our next item of business, which is, item O2 is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations in the amount of $29,153 in committed revenue funds for equipment, material, and supply purchases at the Halliburton Park Nature Center, the Davis Center, and MLK Center. This, I'd like to recognize, our city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item will be presented by Assistant Parks and Rec Director Sally Thigpen.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city council members. This appropriation for your consideration is for interpretive signage and to replace tables and chairs at the community centers. And to replace tables and chairs at the community centers. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of our staff? Hearing none. What are the wishes of council with respect to the item?
We have a motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Spears, second by Mayor Protem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Cleared it one more time. We'll have to do it one more time. In respect to the...
I'm going to take a voice vote. It's a little, we're breaking it in here. I'm going to take a voice vote here. In respect to the item O2, what are the wishes of council? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by just saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Waddell, second by Mayor Protem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item O3, which is an ordinance appropriating $8,075 in donations and $3,555 in program income to the Commission on African American History's Special Purpose Fund. This, I'd like to recognize, our city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that will just take the money that was raised in donations and from program income and send it back to the Commission on African American History's Special Purpose Fund for them to continue their annual event.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. What are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Waddell. Discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. This concludes the regular agenda. Are there any items to be brought forward by our city manager?
The only thing that I would like to just point out, Mr. Mayor, for members of the public, some folks in attendance tonight may have been here for the proposed social district. And that item, apologize if the notification didn't get to everybody, that item was postponed, but it will be heard at the next council meeting on September 23rd. So apologize if anyone came out for that. But council will be taking that item up in two weeks.
Okay, very good. Our city attorney?
Yes, sir. We do have a closed session motion at your pleasure.
Okay, thank you. City clerk?
No, sir. I don't have anything.
Okay, I'm going to start from left to right tonight. I'm going to say, Mr. Spears?
No, I'm good.
Good. Ms. Andrews?
Yes, I'd like to mention that I serve on the WAVE Transit Board. And our city manager, Becky Hawk, is the new chair of the WAVE Transit Board. And last month, when we were having concerns about only one early voting site, I had asked WAVE staff to look into increasing the number of fair-free days. Traditionally, they go fair-free on Election Day and on Earth Day. And I asked them to make some weekend days fair-free during early voting. And they brought it back to us this past month, and it passed. And so we're going to have three more fair-free days during early voting. It's going to be October, all on weekends, so October 25th and 26th, and November 1st, in addition to November 4th. So, and it's important to note that this is fair-free for the entire system. We hope that you go vote. But even if you just go to the grocery store, that's cool. Try out the bus, so.
Mr. Ryan Bark?
Just thank you, everybody, for coming down here tonight. A little bit of history here made. Thank you. It's a beautiful place. I've got three more months in signora.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. As mentioned earlier during the proclamation, September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. And there's a program entitled QPR. It's where they train you to recognize whether or not an individual is thinking about committing suicide. The Q stands for question. You ask the person, "Are you thinking about committing suicide?" You really bring up the question. The P stands for persuade. You persuade the individual that you're more valuable to us alive than dead. We love you. We care about you. And then the R stands for refer. That means that you get them some professional help. And I share that with you, because just this week, I had a young lady who was really in my congregation, actually, and she got a call that her niece had a knife to her throat, okay? A young girl, okay? And so we try to teach that, so people can understand that. Look it up. It's called QPR. You question, you persuade, and then you refer. And the number that you would use is 988. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waddell? Okay. Mr. Joyner?
We're going to have, as a city, a remembrance for September 11th, this Thursday at 9:00 a.m., and that is going to be at the Wilmington Fire Department location near MB Park. And I just wanted to invite folks to come and be a part of that.
Very good. Look, I've got one more thing. I'm sorry. Yeah, the funeral for Major McNair, the young man who, when he was at Greensboro at the A&amp;T University, sat at the counter and literally started the civil rights movement. He will be funerated here in Wilmington at Macedonia Baptist Church at 1:00 on Saturday. So those who can, and we want to remember him and his family.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to go ask for a motion to enter into a closed session pursuant to the provisions of the North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-3, 18.11, A and 3, and A and 6, in order for the city council to, one, preserve the attorney-client privilege and provide the city attorney with direction regarding several matters, including City of Wilmington versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation, file number 7.18CV00081, Florida FL, and 2, consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of prospective public officers or employees. I will also note that this closed session will be held in the retiring room behind council chambers. And at the end of the closed session, the council will reopen its public session and adjourn at that time. So we have a motion by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Ryan Bark. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. We will now go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you, and good night.